Tracy, the one in charge.
Yeah, she's doing the deal.
Ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special session of the Board of Education. There is one agenda item this evening, and that is the Learning Transition Plan Matrix. The Amory School District Board of Education aims to make decisions tonight which will make it possible for our students to return to school for in-person instruction in the near future. The Board thanks the members of our community who have offered their thoughts via emails and phone calls on the best matter and which to return our students to school. Your thoughts will be central to the conversations and decisions which will take place this evening. Tonight, we welcome your constructive feedback through the community comments portion of this agenda's, this meeting's agenda. Please know that the Board cannot answer questions or respond to your comments, though we are here to listen to your feedback. Before we start with community comments, we will start with the consent agenda items, which are the minutes and the agenda from last week's meeting.
A move, will you approve those? Second?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the consent agenda items are approved. Next, we'll go to community comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. If you wish to speak, please make sure that you are signed up to do so. Please come to the microphone when your name is called to speak and state your name at the beginning of your remarks. Thank you. The first person signed up to speak is Alan Carlson.
Hello, I'm Alan Carlson. I teach technology education here at both the middle and the high school. And what I brought over here with me tonight is an example of an assignment that students are given to complete in our machine woods course at the high school. This year, we've had two sections of machine woods, that's our intro class, and we have one section of the advanced woodworking class. There are probably over sixty students in just those three courses, and they're going to have a chance to learn a valuable trade skills. And then what they're going to really focus on are the characteristics of wood and how material as a process is formed, separated, fabricated, conditioned, and finished. They use lots of common machines that you might see in your home, but they use lots of specialized machines like a CNC router and a wood lathe to complete that project. Yes, there's material that we study and we learn prior to the production of the project that's here in front of you. And since remote learning, that's happened in my class that I'm teaching right now. However, continuation of remote learning is not going to allow the students to use the lab and the facility here and the equipment that we have to learn the skills and demonstrate the proficiency toward the final project that's here in front of you. And I think it holds true with any trade class that's taught here. If that student can't have the opportunity to swing a hammer or strike an arc or turn a wrench, we haven't provided them with that complete experience that they need. Another point is that many of the students that take TechEd classes are those that are not likely to attend a post-secondary school. And they're going to learn the trade skill and become interested in what they want to do after high school right here in this building. And the other thing I think is missing is the presence that's provided by a teacher like myself. I often will pull up a chair and sit next to that individual and observe and support and guide them as they're doing this lab work. I just feel that we have made a decision to bring back kids for sports here in the high school, and I think we need to give that opportunity to all students so that they can be engaged in their classes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person up to speak, Kate Weisenbeck and Rebecca Pearson.
Good evening, my name is Kate Weisenbeck.
And I am Rebecca Pearson.
We are speaking tonight on behalf of several members of the district's pupil services team, including Troy Minorcheck, school counselor at Amory Intermediate, Lanay Seaman, school nurse, Deanna Johnson, school psychologist, Katie Johnson, school psychologist, Lisa Benson, school counselor at Lean Elementary, Julie Montgomery-Reese, student success coordinator, six twelve, Rebecca Pearson, student success coordinator, four K five, and myself, Kate Weisenbeck, school counselor at Amory Middle School.
We wanted to start out by thanking you and acknowledging the hard and thoughtful work that has been done throughout the course of the COVID-19 pandemic. The mitigation plan and learning model matrix set forth for the start of the 2021 school year was concise, well-communicated, and rooted in safety. The foundation of that plan allowed us to have a successful start to the school year, and again, we thank you for that. We compiled this message to address the varying concerns of staff and parents following events that occurred over the past two weeks. Many people in our community are experiencing toxic stress because of the pandemic. We have witnessed a large number of staff and parents in distress due to the unpredictability and perceived lack of safety.
Tonight's message is not about recommendations to the learning model matrix, but rather a reminder of the trauma-sensitive culture our district is committed to. While Polk County continues to have case levels identified as critically high, now more than ever, it is important to show the strength and leadership of our district by following through with philosophies to which we have committed. Many of our staff, students, and families have been deeply and personally affected by COVID-19. Creating a sense of safety, especially during this health crisis, is critical. Regardless of any potential changes, we are urging you to take the principles of trauma-informed care into your highest consideration.
Tonight, we would like to highlight four of the seven principles that we feel deserve considerable attention. The first one is physical safety. During a health-related crisis, it is important to address physical safety concerns. A trauma-informed response includes ensuring that students and staff feel they are being protected and that their physical safety is a priority throughout the crisis. Communicating clearly to staff, students, families, and community partners about the response, eliminating any shaming or stigmatizing language. Soliciting input and feedback with the goal of understanding if there is anything that the district can do to help staff and students feel safe and attending to staff unease. Secondly is emotional safety. It is important to minimize surprises and help staff understand that the district is looking out for their well-being. A trauma-informed approach includes helping staff understand what to expect, demonstrating flexible consistency. Uncertainty is very stressful, so the extent that the district can be consistent and predictable will alleviate stress levels. Building in time to check in about feelings. Facts are needed, but emotions are important. Staff need to feel supported and safe to speak out about vicarious trauma, work-related stress, and other emotional considerations.
The third principle is trust and transparency. Being transparent fosters trust and creates a sense of value and belonging for staff and students. A trauma-informed response includes communicating regularly. Clear, direct, and frequent communication helps put anxious staff and students at ease. Explaining the why behind decisions and policies. Staff, students, parents will feel less worried and stressed if they truly understand why decisions are being made. Conveying strength and sensitivity. During a time of crisis, staff look for leadership in the district as well as compassion. The fourth principle is collaboration. Given the tremendous needs and the large numbers of people affected, it is necessary to collaborate as much as possible. We cannot do this in isolation. A trauma-informed response includes making policy decisions with other organizations in mind, initiating new partnerships and non-traditional collaborations, and collaborating across departments, teams, and buildings to ensure greater effectiveness and efficiency. This afternoon, we provided Dr. Dierfler with this document that can be shared as the district navigates through the remainder of this pandemic. It provides a more in-depth framework of trauma-informed decision-making. With consideration to the primary components of trauma-sensitive schools, we are confident that our school community can thrive during this challenging time. Again, thank you for the time, consideration, and effort you have put into our school over the past several months. Your leadership is greatly and sincerely appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person wishing to speak is April Boe.
I apologize for my ugly Christmas sweater here. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is April Boe, and I have two kids in the Amory School District. And my husband and I are proud graduates of the Amory School District. I am here tonight because I care deeply about this community and our school district and all the kids who attend the Amory School District. Back in August, when the Board was looking to approve the matrix, one member brought up the idea of creating it based on numbers, building by building instead of district-wide. At that time, I personally thought this would have been a great way to move forward, as what happens in one building can be different than the other buildings. And the very district that Amory built the matrix off of, Hudson, did move, in fact, move forward with the building-by-building matrix. Ultimately, though, the Board decided against this, and the matrix was approved as is. I believe that that decision is partly why we are in the very situation we are in tonight. Sitting at a special board meeting in an unimaginable scenario, fighting for our kids and their right to be educated in person by the very professionals in this room who do it best, our teachers. So often, we have heard throughout this life-changing pandemic, we have to follow the science and the facts. The facts have not changed. The CDC, the AAP, the AAFP, and countless pediatricians that I talk to on a daily basis for my job all agree. The best place for our children is in school, in person where all their needs are met, both educationally as well as emotionally. The science has changed, which we would expect with the novel virus, but our own district data, which was quoted last week at the meeting, still supports when Amory School District was in person, the cases were mainly due to community spread and exposure, not from within the walls of our buildings. And even more proof of this is cases have continued to happen even though the kids are currently remote. And the great news is, we have a vaccine coming and will hopefully be approved for emergency use tomorrow. But the doses will not come in time to justify waiting just a little bit longer to get our kids back to school. The reality is, with the phased approach for vaccination, the average person may not receive a vaccine until spring or even early summer. Are we willing to wait until the spring to get our kids back in school? Respectfully, I'm asking the Board to at minimum bring our four K through fifth graders back for in-person instruction, no matter what the color of our matrix is. I'm asking you to provide the same in-person instruction that kids in many other districts are receiving. Why is Amory one of only four districts in Northwest Wisconsin, only in remote, which is, you know, per the data that you'll be sharing later in the evening? The deficits that were created last spring for our kids due to no in-person education are still being worked through now and made up, months into the new school year. The impact of these deficits will probably never be totally known, but the one question I have is, how much deeper and bigger do the deficits have to become? This pandemic has been fair to no one, and every single person has been impacted by it. I do believe, though, our kids need and deserve their education, and in-person is best. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person up for community comments is Morgan Olson.
Hi, my name is Morgan Olson, and my son Nolan attends the intermediate school, and he's a fifth grader. Those of you who have met Nolan know he has severe autism and cannot do any kind of learning through a remote setting. He is more like a two-and-a-half-year-old to a three-year-old, so any form of remote learning is not effective for him. When we were shut down in the spring by the governor, we just kind of had to grin and bear it. There was literally no learning taking place for my son. Nothing could be done that he would be able to participate in. So then, we went through the summer, all of that jazz, got to start back up with the school year, and then we just recently got shut down again. So, once again, my son is being left behind, and I know that he is not the only specialized student that is in the same scenario. My son has an IEP to receive his education that he deserves, and he is getting nothing. Imagine my surprise and infuriation when I opened up the Free Press last week and saw that winter sports were approved for the high school. I had been communicating with his staff members and the pupil services director, and nothing has been approved for these special ed children with the IEPs that cannot learn virtually. And I am furious. As a mother, it breaks my heart. So, I contacted Dr. Dierfler, and I was told that allowing a few special ed students into the buildings for one-on-one learning would probably look like favoritism. To me, this feels like discrimination against the disabled that cannot speak for themselves. My son is nonverbal. He sings, he hums, that's it. That is all the noises. He has no learning going on because he cannot learn remotely, but we are going to allow sports to take place for the high schoolers. I'm sorry, that's not appropriate. My son deserves an education. The state pays him for an additional education. I have contacted the Wisconsin DPI. I have contacted my representative, Rob Stasholt, who is going to be looking into state statutes on what to do with this. Unfortunately, when I contacted them on Thursday, they haven't been able to get back to me yet. So, the state, the state is funding for my son to receive an education, and he has gotten squat. I need you to consider this. Why was there no consideration for the special ed children when you were building the matrix? I know for a fact that there are other children in the intermediate school that can't learn virtually like my son, and there are probably them throughout the whole district. But they have nothing and nobody to advocate for them, which is sickening. I want implementation for the special ed students that require the one-on-one teaching my son requires hand-over-hand learning to be able to come in for class. With his IEP, he'd only received three hours a day of education to begin with, and that is very minimal for a child who is like a three-year-old. Even an hour of one-on-one, hand-over-hand with his special ed teacher would be much better than what we have right now. His social worker wants to know, why isn't he in school? Everybody else is in school, all these kids that have IEPs are in school. And I just don't understand why they are being left behind. These are some of the most vulnerable children in the district, and nobody's speaking for them. It's disappointing that the school board did not have this thought out in advance on what they would do with children who have these IEPs and excessive needs for support before they created the matrix and allowed us to go to the red. And on my final thought here, the hybrid model is not going to work for my child. As you know, he can't do remote learning, but putting him in a one cohort for two days a week is not enough. I understand that the buildings will be closed on Wednesdays to the students, but he deserves his four days of education. I'm sorry for the families out here that this is stressing out. It's actually caused me significant health issues that have been unresolved this entire time. This is a very stressful situation for all the parents, but imagine being a special-needs parent who can do nothing for their child. That's not fair, and I think you need to really consider it, implementing something immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Joe Vierkant.
Hello, I'm Joe Vierkant. I'm a proud father of two children at the Amory School District, and I've been in public service for over twenty-one years. I have been in communication with some of you and sent out an email, and I just wanted to reiterate my stance on why I would like our school district to reopen in person. While there are many reasons and scientific evidence that in-school learning is safer, it does not coincide with our matrix. And I also believe that our matrix will have to change if we want in-school education. I listened to a male board member state that a positivity rate at thirty-five percent, we were at a positivity rate of thirty-five percent, and we needed to get down to what was it, I believe, five, to actually change. And I have the opportunity of working in a school district now that has a completely different plan or matrix. And that plan doesn't go off of a positivity rate of COVID throughout the county and throughout the school district. It goes off of a positivity rate of school members and students. That is the significant difference that needs to change in our matrix. And I brought this up to Char, and I brought this up, well, I sent, I only received two emails back, and thank you for your reply, I appreciate that as a parent. Another thing I wanted to do is, I also wanted to thank every parent who has the ability to stay home and attempt to educate their children right now. I don't get to do that. I can't imagine doing it. And with your positions, most of you have just as much education and experience as I do, obviously a lot more in some others. So I don't think anything is privy here. I don't think there's some special science or secretive science behind this. We all kind of know what the science is, and if you haven't studied it, that's what I'm really concerned about. Our community also needs to know that they're heard. Again, if we're going to give out, if we're going to give out guidance, we need to know that we're heard. If the overwhelming majority is saying, please get our children back in school, it's something we should do. Now, one thing about me is, is I don't like giving grievances without giving some solutions. And I provided the, the School District of Barron's solutions to this council, to this Board. And I hope that you had an opportunity to look at those. Again, I told you the major, the actual matrix differences of numbers. I almost just want to say ditto to what April said. You've taken so many away from me here, so I'm just cutting this up. And on top of it, many of you know I absolutely love children. And my main goal and objective as a law enforcement officer when I worked in Amory was to get to our kids early. And I'm extremely concerned about some of our trauma-informed care kids and who's educating them. While may, maybe our high school has a different attendance, which I don't know, Josh, but our elementary, our intermediate, and our middle, I am extremely concerned about. And that gives us that opportunity of the matrix where we can fill if we have staffing concerns and levels. And most importantly, I just wanted to thank you. This is a time when I'm sure it will keep up with the troubles of where you're at right now and the decisions that you're going to make. I can only imagine to be during war times. I want you to know I feel it's prudent. I feel it's the safest to get our kids back in school. If you have any questions on how a school district has continued throughout the year, please talk to Barron. Please talk to Cameron. And again, we have an opportunity to come back in session, whether it's before Christmas or after Christmas, but again, allowing that five to seven days to see if illnesses do arise. Okay, we don't want to mess this up. Please, get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person up for community comments is Nate Tamagnan.
Who is that? Nate? Hi. So, I wrote this, like, two-page thing down that I was going to say, but after listening to everybody's responses tonight already, I'm, like Joe, out of, out of material. And I don't understand how a board can sit here and listen to how many people are filling this auditorium tonight and throughout the community that think the exact same way, and that all agree that our kids should be back in school. I don't know, you know, I know some of you, I don't know all of you, but it just pulls at my heartstrings, you have to hear a story like that. My wife also is a special education teacher. It's a daily occurrence for us, hearing these stories. I pulled, I pulled an article today out of the Washington Post. I thought maybe it's still relative. The title of the article is, "We Figured Out It's Safe to Have Schools Open, Let's Keep Them, Let's Keep Them That Way." It was dated on November nineteenth of this year. The article opens up by talking about Michigan's governor, Gretchen Whitmer, and how she is facing an explosion of new COVID cases in her state. The paragraph goes on to state that, "In the face of this explosion, the governor, the governor has decided to close indoor dining, business offices, high schools, and colleges." But she is keeping open schools for kindergarten through eighth grade, because she knows how important those kids are. And then I could go on with this about data and facts, and I've got all this stuff, but you guys know all that already. We all, in this building, all know that already. So I would just like everybody to plead with you, have some consideration for our littles. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next person up to speak is Danielle McCall.
I'm Danielle McCall, sixteen-year veteran teacher here in the School District of Amory. I speak tonight for myself, as well as my husband, as parents of a third grader and a kindergartner in the school district. First of all, thank you for your continued effort during these most uncertain times. We, as parents and educators, want nothing more than to have everyone back inside the walls of the school building. However, we are not in ordinary times, and no, this is not currently possible. We trust that you will continue to make decisions based on data, science, and recommendations from our local healthcare professionals as to what is best and safest for our community. We need the entire School District of Amory to continue to demonstrate strong leadership, especially in these uncertain times. Consistency is critical in times like this for our staff, students, families, and community. We believe that another change in the learning model transition plan would seriously jeopardize the integrity of the School District of Amory, as well as the health and safety of all. Distance learning is not ideal or easy, but it can be accomplished and done well. Each day, we ask our own children and students to tackle challenges head-on and practice using a growth mindset, grit, and perseverance. We, as parents, educators, district leaders, and community members, must do the same. We would like to share what educational researchers and leaders state about distance learning in their recently published book, "The Distance Learning Playbook, Grades K Through Twelve." In "An Evaluation of Effect Size: A Statistical Tool to Scale Impact of Remote Learning," Douglas Fisher, Nancy Frey, and John Hattie note, "The effect of distance learning is small, .14, but that does not mean it is not effective. It means it does not matter whether teachers undertake teaching in situ or from a distance over the Internet. What we do matters, not the medium of doing it." When people see that there is an effect size of .14, they incorrectly assume that distance learning is not effective, but let's take a closer look. In comparison with traditional building-based learning, district, distance learning is not an accelerator. It's also... It's also not a negative. That means that the setting isn't the deciding factor, nor should it be interpreted that distance is disastrous. What is far more important are the methods of teaching that spark learning, not the medium. The choice of task matters critically. It is the choice of tasks relative to where students are now and where they need to go next that advances their learning. We know remote learning comes with its challenges but can be done effectively. We urge you to stand for the health, safety, and well-being of our students, staff, families, and entire community, and make no changes to the learning model transition plan. If you feel change is necessary at this time, we ask for a well-thought-out and purposeful decision. Please allow time for families to be informed. Please allow time for families to make an informed decision as to what is best for their health, safety, and education. And please allow time for the schools to plan and transition. It seems like an opportune time to implement this change would be closer to the semester transition, such as January fourteenth or twenty-second. This would allow adequate time for the aforementioned items, as well as a hopeful decline in the COVID positivity rates after the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person up to speak is Kyle Warren.
Hi, my name is Kyle Warner, and thank you for letting me speak. I don't know, a lot of stuff has already been said, and I kind of agree with a lot of it. We have two kids, one's in 4K and one's in fifth grade. The fifth grader, what we're worried about, we want our kids back in school. I guess, I guess we could say a lot of facts and stuff about science and all that stuff, but the big thing is, there was just an article reported that one kid in the state of Wisconsin has passed from COVID-19, which is sad, but that kid was also in remote learning, wasn't in school, and that person died. So I don't understand why we all think we should close, especially when all the schools in this area, at least most of them, are open, at least for five kindergarten on 4K. Other than that, I guess I just don't have much more to say. I could rant and rave all day, but I really think the kids should be in school. It does not make sense what we're doing here. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, the next person up is Andrea Yuhas.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Andrea Yuhas, and I'm the parent of a high school and a middle school student here in the district, as well as an employee over at the middle school. I want to begin tonight by thanking you guys for your time and commitment that each of you have brought to the position, whether as an elected official or as an administrator of the district. It has not gone unnoticed, and we appreciate it. Over the past several months, I've had a unique view to the events of COVID as they've sort of unfolded across the district and how we have educated our childrens and how that has changed. I like to think I'm a fairly moderate person. I work pretty hard to try and think critically, to be fair, and to be open-minded. Early on in my career, I received some advice that's kind of stuck with me, and I was told that as I went through my life and worked in my professional career, I'd worked with a lot of different people who had a lot of different opinions, had a lot of different ways of doing things, and that the best advice they could give me was to look around me, take their very best attributes, give them my own twist, and make them my own. I'd like to think that that's what we've been doing here at the Amory School District. That's what I've seen. The decisions have been well thought out, they've been implemented, people have been aware and informed about what's going on, if they've taken the time to look and see what they are. And I really believe that as we go forward, I think that needs to continue. I'd also like to say that I believe we did really well in the face-to-face model. I honestly was astounded by how well our children took the precautions and the protocols that we put in front of them and how well they implemented them. I like to think I'm a half-glass full, but I'm also a parent, and I'll be honest with you, I anticipated there being more issues than there really were. I thought they did a great job, and I really think that both you guys as a team and the people working the front lines in the school were a big part of that. I know a lot of the discussion tonight and a lot of the things that you'll show later in your presentation relate to pre-K through five. So I felt like my point, I guess my purpose in sharing is that I would like to at least have on the table the conversation about all of the students in our district coming back. Not just our littles, but students who have special programming, students who are in honors classes, and all of the students that fall in between those areas, because I think that equity in education and the services that we provide for all of them are important. Some are easier than others. I'll be honest, I have two children at home. They are certainly old enough to be home. They certainly have the technology to do what they need to do, and I, I guess you could say that they are probably decent students. But truly, and I guess selfishly, they deserve the opportunity to be here face-to-face in some form or fashion, too. One thing I'd like to lay out there is the hybrid model that was built into the, the matrix has not been explored, and we haven't had an opportunity to look at that. From working and seeing what I've seen, I feel like that hybrid model gives us some flexibility, some ability to implement or ensure that the protocols and safety precautions we have in place are even better monitored and enforced. I know that a lot of my coworkers are going to want to clobber me when I walk out the door because I said that. When we were thrown into this in the spring, it stunk. It was terrible. When I watched everything that went on over the summer with teachers and administrators and school district administrators from across the county, county nurses, community partners, it was hard. It was really hard to build that plan, but it was well thought out, it was articulate, it was brought forward, and it happened. We got back here. It was really hard when we went virtual. It's all really hard, but every time we learned, every time we got better, and every time we persevered and came out of it. I feel strongly that this is because of the planning and implementation that the people in this room did. I think it's really important to continue with that diligence as you have in the past. Allow time not only to take in the opinions, the information, the data that presents itself, but allow the time to process that information and to make decisions based on that, communicate them, and then purposely put it forward for the rest of us to monitor and adjust how we go forward. I want to take a second again to just close and thank you guys. I know the time and effort and sleepless nights that you've put into it. I do not envy the decisions that you have had to make, that you will have to make, even in a normal year, and we all know this has been anything but normal. So I just want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to share that.
Thank you. There is one more person signed up to speak, and that is Jerry Cook.
My name is Jerry Cook, and when I was here last week at the meeting, as you know, I had a statement prepared, but I didn't share it then because I thought that education was everybody's top priority and had nothing to worry about getting the kids back to school. And actually was more concerned that you were not going to allow winter sports, so I did not share my thoughts then, which brings us all here now. What's best for the majority of everyone, kids, staff, and parents, that's what needs to be taken into consideration. So we need a different plan that's going to achieve that goal, mental health as well as physical health. Last week, I was happy to see a small step to allow athletics. In my life, that was the first step to getting back to normal. But we need a goal date. Hope for those kids that they are valued, their education is valued, just as much as all the other schools in our area. With your current matrix, there is no hope. It can't be cut and dry. I actually work in a bank, and we have a lot of written procedures for everything. Everybody wants it written down, they want to have something to follow. Well, sometimes you have to vary from those directions and follow your brain. Think about it. What makes best sense for that situation? You say, "Follow the matrix." Well, we did, and we skipped right to the red with no hope of getting out, not even giving other options a try. And one of the comments last week that we needed more data. Well, the funny thing is now that as of last Monday, the data for our county is trending downward, even after the Thanksgiving break. Now, we are the most, the only school that is remote, and most of the data is not consistent. How can you use numbers that we don't even know are accurate? The county site on the state of Wisconsin is never the same as the, the county site is never the same as the state of Wisconsin site. So if the risks are so high, how come the other fifteen or so schools have some sort of in-person instruction? Shame on them for valuing the education interaction of ten to twenty thousand people more than their lives. Or do they feel that the risks are so low and the benefits are so much higher of being in person? There are risks every day, just getting out of bed. If you say you're not an epidemiologist or mathematician, okay, then let's not pretend to be and look to the experts in those areas. The quarantine days have changed. The state numbers never match the county numbers. Why can't the matrix change? Things change. The experts say that kids aren't at risk and need to be in school because education matters. And what some kids are getting at home is not an education. These kids have been out of school for fifteen school days. My special ed son has had no services for fifteen days, and who knows how many more. He is just as good as being counted as one of the ten to twenty percent of those students that have had no physical contact. Physical and occupational therapy or interaction with his peers for an eight-year-old cannot happen over a Zoom meeting, especially when his caregiver is working full-time. Can you imagine if you had a ten to twenty percent high school dropout rate? Well, we might be getting ready for that. Science, everyone says we need to look to science. Science says that kids are less likely to get, less likely to get sick, less likely to spread it in school. I think we all see the answer is to have the grade schools in person, but also a plan for reintroduction of the older kids. Science is ever-changing. Right now, Amory School District is not changing. We think we are above science. Science can change, but we can't. And you have to take the what-ifs, you can't take the what-ifs into account. Parents, staff, society, we are all scared. But if we let fear rule our lives, we would need to live in a, live in a bubble. You would not be able to leave your house, drive a car. Let me tell you about being scared, taking risks. Two months ago, I let my sixteen-year-old print his own driver's license. You don't think that's scary. Each time I let him drive on Highway Eight, we just have to move forward. You can make an adjustment to start on Monday. Everyone will be ready. If the teachers, students are expected to be present every day and sign into their computer, then why can't they be in school on Monday? What's the difference if we were going by the matrix and for some miracle, the cases had stopped? We'd be expected to be in school on Monday. Have faith in your staff that they can roll with the changes. Also commented last week was, "Parents need a plan." Well, we like a plan. I'm a planner. Plans change. We scramble. In the last nine months, we've realized that things change in short notice. But it seems like the determination was already made again yesterday before listening to anyone in the audience. In closing, my recommendation, first, change the matrix. Use it as a guide, not the gospel or a book set in stone. The new red part is discretionary. That gives you freedom to make choices. Look at what the current situation presents. Look within as opposed to the whole county. Second, make a plan to get everyone back safely. It might be baby steps, but it is going to be baby steps to get the students' education back to the standards that we're used to, because the longer they're out, the longer and harder it is going to be. By doing nothing, waiting for it to get better, we will grow farther and farther behind. The six-plus weeks that we are out, that we could possibly be out, could take weeks for some grades to just catch up. You, right now, have the opportunity to change the hopeless direction that we are going. If you want our students, staff, and parents to be successful, you need to make some kind of change. We, as parents, are here to help and support you, but you have to hear where we are coming from, that what we are doing now is not successful. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's it for community comments. So we'll move on to the action items. The first action item is the learning model transition plan matrix.
Okay, well, everybody has a PowerPoint here at the table, and there were PowerPoint hard copies made available to you. I won't belabor the points that are in these documents. You've taken them in, and you could probably process them all on your own. I'll just give you the highlights as we move along and certainly ask questions if you have them. The first slide, if you will, is the present state of the matrix. This is what we adopted back in summer. There's nothing here any different than that, other than the change we made at the end of, or the beginning of October, which would have had us already into the color of red when we only had, in the district, seven total cases. The county had gone far north of that. So that's the first slide. The second is a depiction of positive COVID cases within the district, over fourteen-day windows, all the way back to the beginning of school in the early part of September. Not rocket science here. It certainly has increased, and it started to increase pretty rapidly when we got out to the end of October. The window, the most recent window, from the twenty-fifth of November through the eighth of December, was less, about three hundred or so than the previous window. So it is true that the cases by these numbers are decreasing. By building is the next slide that you'll see, and this depicts just a little bit of description, staff, students, and then it's broken up, clubhouse, four school buildings, and then other, such as district office or an other undefined position. So the number of staff total has been twenty-five cases since the beginning of the school year, fifty-one for students, seventy-six in all, and then you'll see the total numbers there in the far-right column, and then a percentage down below in regards to the percentage of all staff that have been positive, the percentage of all students that have been positive. So that is a depiction of what's taken place in the district. In regards to absences, because clearly when there's a positive case, that would have an absence effect, whether it be that person or quarantine of others, you'll see the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school, number of days missed, number of students that that involves. So at the high school, for instance, there's two-hundred-and-thirty-two kids involved, and there's approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-five at the high school. So it just gives you sort of a frame of reference, a context for number of kids gone and then number of days gone, because that would depend on the situation, oftentimes a quarantine of ten or more days. The next slide is a total COVID student-related absences, simply graphically depicted. Again, it doesn't take much to figure out, the blue line increased pretty rapidly when we got out to the end of October. The total number of student absences rose at that time and rose up to the point where we departed for remote. The sixteenth was the first day of remote, thereby the twelfth was the last day here. COVID-related student absences by building, that's the next page. You'll see four trend lines of four different colors for four different buildings. The trend line for the high school obviously increased rapidly, as did the others, but it increased more in number in that more cases occurred there than in the other buildings. The middle school comprised the second-most, and then intermediate followed by the elementary. So that's broken up by building over two-and-a-half-ish months. Staff-related absences, broken down into two ways, clubhouse staff and school staff, number of days missed, and number of staff that that involved. Again, seventy-eight of the total number of staff, some two-twenty-five, so you're looking at a third, if not a little bit more, of that population, and a grand total of five-hundred-and-eight-and-a-half days missed. And that runs from the beginning of September all the way through November, because staff are still missing for reasons related to COVID-19. Total COVID-related absences, you'll see the trend line. What I would like, would like to make reference to, we had a pretty rapid escalation of staff absences in the middle part of November, peaking on November eighteenth, which coincidentally, or not, happened to be our last day here in person, just prior to that. And staff absences in regards to needing a sub, if you will, decreased rapidly when we went to remote, because there was less contact with kids. because there was less contact with kids, thereby less quarantine needed. So those, that connection was made in that way. COVID-related staff absences by program. This is green for school staff and blue for clubhouse staff. You'll see that both clubhouse and school staff increased there again in that middle part of November and then decreased when we went into remote. So that's what that depicts. The next two pages are what CSA 11 schools are doing. This is a moving target in that schools are changing their plans by the day. This is simply the night before last where they stood. This could, in some cases, be different and in many cases, it's probably the same. Some have declared what they're doing out through January. And actually, some have declared what they're doing out through January 11th. It's depicted by color, whether it be in-person or virtual or a, or a combination thereof. It again depends on the district. When it's a combination, I can't make, I can't make assumptions as to what it is. Many models are 4K through 5 in-person, 612 are remote. That's a pretty commonly-held sentiment in many districts. So you'll see two pages of that information. This is real time through the night before last, but if I logged in on my computer right now, it might be somewhat different in some cases right here today. So that's what our neighbors, if you will, that make up the 40 schools of Northwest Wisconsin are doing. The summary, if you wanted to go to the short form, if you will, is on the next page for learning models, in-person, et cetera, all the way through unknown. So 20 schools in-person out of the 40, so 50%, et cetera, all the way down. Again, at the hybrid, the in-person, virtual, I don't have grade levels. The spreadsheet simply doesn't depict it that way. Though that information's available if we ask the district by all means. The second-to-last page is the learning model transition plan. This, this is a revision to the matrix. And I'd like to highlight three things that were revised, four things that were revised. In yellow, originally it stated from back in July and August that the district would be a 4K through 12th grade cohort, meaning one group's a Monday, Tuesday, the other group's Thursday, Friday. The yellow has been changed to if we were in yellow, 4K through 5 face-to-face. In 612, middle high school would be in that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday hybrid. The red, originally stated, it presently states, 4K through 12 is remote. Now what it states is 4K through 5 face-to-face, in 612 remote, or everyone's remote. The question is, how would you make that distinction? That with the administrative team this afternoon, I think the highest priority in that distinction would be the availability of staff to actually have school. If we had no staff to teach, it would be difficult to have school. But that's the distinction in red. The dates, you'll see yesterday's date, or actually, it's today's date. And then the next determination date would be January 6th. Originally, it was December 30th. But in light of actions over the last two weeks, we simply jostled the dates to match up all the way out into February. The last addition, change, is the first bullet point under the dates. And it states, "Location of positive district cases will be considered when determining matrix placement." In other words, if all of the cases were in one particular building, say they're all at the middle school and the district number would have you in yellow, we could consider, middle school's got all the cases. We got serious problems there. Let's not have the middle school in session. Let's keep the others rolling. That's what that change would allow you to do. In the last page, the last slide, is a revised, re-revised version, if you will. And the only thing that's been changed here from the previous page are the numbers down the left column and the numbers across the top. The numbers down the left column have been doubled and the numbers across the top have almost been doubled. And what that, if you took, for instance, today's, yesterday's numbers through that two-week window were 21 cases and 537 district case, or I hope it's not that, 537 county cases. We would be in the yellow because 21 would put you in the third row and 537 would put you in the fourth column and that would put you in the yellow. Right now, 21 and 537 puts you clearly in the red. So that's the change here. The, the science, if you will, behind, behind increasing those numbers, if you wanted your 612 population back, you really have one of three ways to do that. Change your descriptions in yellow and red. Change your numbers across the county and across the district. Increase them. Or you scrap the matrix and you make a decision week to week, which is what most districts have done since September. There are still but five matrices in the entire CSA. We're one of those five. And two of those five copied us. So three of the five are the same. So that's how you arrive at option two. And that's my last, yes, my last slide. So I'll turn it over to you. Comments, questions for me or however you want to proceed.
We were one of the schools that opened face-to-face. And the reason that happened was because we had a plan and we had the staff behind us and to do it. In October, we changed that matrix to keep face-to-face. So we are flexible. We are looking at things. We are listening. We want everybody to be safe. And so that's why we're here tonight, is to try and create something that's comfortable for everybody to follow. Because I don't think we want to do the week-by-week where you find out Sunday night as parents whether your kids are going remote or coming or whatever. It's a little bit of a guideline. And it, and we have changed it already once, so we can do it again. I just want everybody to be comfortable with the opinions and viewpoints of, of everyone here. It's hard to do that without finding somebody not happy with decisions. But we're trying to do the best we can. And our feedback is from, you know, the folks that actually run this school. And so we're, we're trying to gather their feedback and their information to make the best decision for everybody.
That's a good, good comments. I, personally, I like the idea of the matrix. That's not to say we can't tweak it like we have. And just to make reference that, you know, we certainly don't have all the answers. As board members, we're here, and I look at my role as a board member to represent the community. And there's obviously been a lot of comments tonight here in person. And I can tell you, there's been many, many more comments, either by email or phone calls from community members. Some in support of coming back and some preferring to stay virtual. And so I look at my role as trying to balance what the community wants and trying to do that safely. I think there's some positive hope. The numbers have went down in the last, the last, what? Announcement reading, when was it?
The last window went down by approximately 300 in the district and five, or 300 in the county, five in the district.
And so I hear, I certainly hear the comments that the community members are making and I appreciate the fact that, that so many community members and staff members are reaching out and sharing their thoughts and opinions. And so just wanted to make that clear.
I, I like the idea of, of a matrix too. I, I don't like the idea of deciding on a week-by-week basis. I think parents and staff need to plan and they need predictability and stability.
Yeah, Chelsea, I would agree with that. I think that we did put a lot of consideration into this. I think always, like, when you have something that's really new, like this is to all of us, that there's going to be all of those things that come up along the way. Considerations that got overlooked. Considerations that we should have put more time into. And I think that's the idea of being flexible and, but still having something concrete and solid while still taking into account everybody's feelings of the unknown. And I think it's pointed out that you can't always base decisions on that, but to lean in and listen to and, and have those people feel heard. And with that, our mission of being a trauma-sensitive school and having those concerns heard, having emotional safety provided for, and that communication, collaboration, and that structure, I think really helps. So I think Dale's right. I mean, we can tweak this as we go along and that's that flexibility that we have. And that's why we're here. I think that we're better prepared tonight after hearing from a number of community members, a number of staff, really taking the time ourselves to look at this, to really give this the time and attention that it deserves. And that's really our job as the board, to support all of the thought that was put in. So I do thank Dr. Dersfler, the admin team, all the teachers for continuing to provide that flexibility and to provide us with options. That being said, I see that our numbers are being inflicted by the clubhouse and there is that option on this new plan of dealing with the clubhouse separately. Can you speak to that a little bit of how that, how we would deal with that separately?
You, you can and there is benefit in doing so. Clubhouse is making contact with a different group of kids. You don't have school-age kids there at some times of day and other times, you do have school-age kids there. But the benefit in doing that is there is really just enough staff to cover the duties that are the care for kids at clubhouse. And if you have just enough staff, you're likely to have the need for two things. One, those staff be in multiple classrooms and the assistance of high school helpers, which is, they're employees of the district, they work in those rooms. But if you have a high school kid that's positive, we had one situation where a high school kid was positive and we ended up with 58 kids in quarantine because of one kid. So we, we don't have the luxury of having high school kids there, but we are, again, just in a position with our staff to barely cover it and they're working in multiple rooms. So if they're in multiple rooms and they potentially are positive, you're going to end up with 20, 30, 40 kids and you're going to end up with multiple staff and you're going to end up with a closed clubhouse. And that's already happened. So to count that separately, that can be done and we can isolate that population. If they're not school-age away from the rest. If they're school-age, there's no isolating them at all because they're going to school the next day during the school day, if we're here. Those staff aren't in classrooms in the elementary and intermediate. They're in classrooms just there in the clubhouse. So there is benefit in doing that. That number is real and those kids have siblings in other buildings, so there's that connection and that you can't avoid.
When we look at the positive COVID-19 cases within the district in the 14-day window and that graphic that you had, and we went from 540 to 848. It was a sharp increase from that two-week window of 1014 and 1027 up to the two-week window ending on 11/24. Maybe Linay can speak to this a little bit, but I thought that that kind of coincided with, we had some county drive-up testing that was taking place, that I think tests were more available and, and testing was certainly, the testing numbers had looked up. And then the sharp decrease, does that mean? I mean, I guess I haven't looked at total number of tests, but are we seeing the sharp decrease due to a viral load decrease, total positive confirmed cases, or just the decrease in testing as well?
As far as I know, we have not had a lot of staff and students take advantage of those off-site, off-site tests. We recommend, we, we expect that staff and students, in order to come back to school, will provide us with a negative result. And I, I cannot remember one result that was from an outside clinic.
I'm just, this was for like county numbers, Linay?
Oh, okay.
Like just, like what I'm saying is so, like, we're taking into consideration county numbers in our transition model.
Right.
And so those are positive confirmed cases.
Right.
And so what I'm looking at, the number is kind of being arbitrary in the fact of the total positive confirmed cases, but if the testing is going down, that doesn't necessarily mean that the viral load is going down.
Right.
It's just, it just means that possibly the testing themselves are going down. Can you speak to that?
This is not based on science. This is just based on my assumptions. I would imagine that there are much fewer people getting tested. One, we're not sending them home from school saying, "You can't come back until these criteria are met." They're home, you know? So moms and dads are going to keep a close eye on them, but they're not as likely to get them tested because they're not in school. So that would be one thing that I would imagine is happening. And when you have a lot of students, schools in our area that are, are not reckon, or not saying you have to be tested to come back to school, I would imagine people are not getting tested as often or as quickly. I also know that many of our families have been told, "You don't need to test. You just stay home for the 14 days and you're good to go," which doesn't help us when we're trying to get numbers. So right now, I feel like these numbers are, they're as accurate as we can make them with the information that we have. But it's, we're not getting, we're getting positive numbers through the county, but we're not getting our quarantine, you know, our, our numbers of quarantine children or, or adults, their parents, because they're not being tested.
Linay and I had a meeting with Polk County Health and the other district administrators and nurse, nurses from Polk County on Monday morning. And what they indicated was three things. One, fewer people are being tested. Two, the positivity rate from October was in the low 30% range and the positivity rate over the last 10 days is 37%. So the positivity rate has increased. And the third finding isn't from Polk County Health, but just from the other Polk County districts. Every single Polk County district is getting their numbers from Polk County Health from their dashboard. So that's the number that everybody's using. And as a matter of fact, I got correspondence in two districts late in the day today and they actually linked Polk County Health's dashboard right into their email that they're sending to their parents. So everyone's using Polk County. I don't know what to use if we don't use Polk County Health numbers. They're the ones tracking them. I don't have those numbers.
Which is true. They seem to be a little off from state.
They are different from the state, yes.
And I think that may be like time and reporting possibly.
I couldn't begin to tell you why, but they are not exactly the same. That is accurate.
Can you also speak to the, the new CDC guidelines of the 10-day now quarantine period versus the 14-day and seven with a negative test? And can you kind of give us a little insight about that? And is there other things that are linked to that?
Yes.
Where that may not necessarily be the case or is it the case?
I can speak to that, yes. I actually have the alert that we got from DPI. And I got a little cover letter along with that alert. And for those of you that haven't heard, the CDC has given an option. It's not really a recommendation because they still feel that the 14-day quarantine is best practice. Why they have gone to the seven and 10-day is to try to get, one, people to be more compliant with quarantine and, two, to try and take some of the, the load-off industries so people can get back to work. It does come with an increased risk for contagibility after that seven days. And I played around with our numbers. And I took, I took Halloween, for an example. And there were 20, I mean, there were, there are many cases between day seven and day 13 after Halloween. And that was pretty consistent with, with deer hunting, with Thanksgiving. So if we go to a seven-day or even a 10-day, we may miss many of those positive cases. It is only for people who have no symptoms. You have, if you do the seven-day model, you have to be tested no sooner than 48 hours before going back out of quarantine. I don't know if our medical community has the ability to do that. community has the ability to do that. And without that test, that negative test on day five or six, or six or seven, you're not, you can't, you can't use that option. And we have had families that have waited five and six days for their results. Now you're at day 13. So, you know, that, that's what I know of the, there's two new options. One is the 10-day, in that you have to be symptom-free for the whole 10 days, and you have to wear a mask, and education has to be done with every person or every employer who makes that available as an option. You need to do intensive training on masks, social distancing, and strict quarantine during those 10 days. So those are the options. And again, they're only applicable if the person is asymptomatic. I'm a little concerned that somebody might develop symptoms on day eight or nine and not say anything, and now we're, because they have to get to work, or, you know, they have to get their children back to school, whatever the case is. I'm, my job in this district is to keep people safe and healthy. And I can sympathize with everyone else's position, but my job is for the physical safety of our staff and our students. So I, that's what I know about the, about the new option. Again, it's not a recommendation. It is just an option for people to use.
And I would like to discuss that more, but maybe I feel like we could discuss that more on December 21st, as far as what we're doing as a school district. I mean, I don't know what our protocol is going to be at this point, you know?
Well, we as an administrative team would need to sit down with Linay and figure out how we would proceed. I don't perceive that to be an issue that the board would need to resolve. It's a mixed bag throughout CISA. There are districts that are adopted. There are districts that have already sent out a mailing adopting it full-fledged and done, and there are districts that were, absolutely, we're not doing that. So it runs the gamut. So some are, some aren't.
Your school nurses are, for the most part, opposed to it.
Okay. Well, I would like to say thanks to Linay for always being here at our meetings and shedding the light that we need to try to make as best science-based decisions as we can here, even though the science rapidly changes on this, and it is evolving. And I think you've done a really bang-up job, as all of our staff has, to implement the, those recommendations from the CDC of the 130-whatever-page bible that we got at the beginning of the year. That makes good sense. The teachers, the staff members, everybody really needs to be applauded, I think, at this time, of the social distancing measures that were put into place, the mask wearing that was put into place, even though I think a bunch of us thought that it would be a disaster, the parents that really pushed that home to the kids and made that comfortable for them. So I think to see our numbers the way they were in the district and talk about that the spread didn't happen in our district, it was widely outside of school, that is a real credit to everybody that's in this building, including you, to keep our kids and our staff members safe, which is part of that trauma-sensitive initiative that we have in this school. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. The leadership team and the staff have been remarkable. So, and I would like to stress, please, parents, please, community members, wear your mask out and about, stay six feet apart from one another, and stay home if you're ill, because it's going to take all of us to be able to get safely back into school.
Yeah, it really impacts of trying to get our kids back here, and that's what people really want. Our educators want that. I think we want that. We've overwhelmingly heard that the parents want that, even though they're nervous about that. It just really takes all of that effort outside of school to get us back here, and for us to make that, to feel good about that decision to do that. So.
And to keep us back here.
And to keep us here, to keep us here, because that's not, that's not fun to keep going, going back and forth either. So, and I think that's why we're here, to really try to tweak this and be flexible and do it in the safest way possible. So, thanks, Linay.
Well, I think that's why we changed the matrix in October, because we felt that it wasn't the school numbers that was the problem, it was the counties. So let's raise those so we can at least stay in school. And we didn't predict the highest number that they would go.
Yeah.
In my mind, it really boils down to just a series of questions that follow one to the next, and that is, do you, do you not change the matrix? That's your first decision. Second, if you choose to do, change the matrix, are you bringing students back? If the answer is yes, who are you bringing back? If you're bringing somebody back, when are you bringing them back? That really are the four questions that flow, I think, for all of us. The, if you are to change the matrix, there are two proposals, and there's probably a billion more that exist, but the two that are here are option one and option two, the first of which is the yellow-red with the changed clause and dates. And then the second option is the increase, those changes plus an increase of the numbers in the county and the numbers in the district. So those are the options on the table.
I know, it's getting late, and I, but I've spent a lot of time putting together some questions, and I, I'd just like the opportunity, if I could.
Go ahead.
Do that to help us make a, just the best informed decision that we can make when we do this. Is that okay?
Of course.
The next questions that I have is for our building principals. And I'll let you fight over who wants to come first, but it's the same question to all of you. And what would the necessary changes look like in each building to go back to face-to-face learning in whatever model that looks like? Way to go, Mr. Gould.
Given the current situation, and it's never fun to hear over and over again, the high school, the high school, the high school has a large number of cases. Our kids have tried their hardest, I think. I think our best chance for a safe return would be to go down the path of a hybrid initially, to see, you know, if the kids thought I was tough before on masks, I'm going to be twice as tough when we come back. I've already told teachers, six feet is not going to cut it for us. It's got to be nine-plus feet between desks. Yeah, I mean, if that's what it takes for us to get our kids in, you know, that's what we'll do.
The hybrid model would lend itself probably better to that easier social distancing, cutting those kids probably by half in each classroom?
Going from 470 students into the building to 230 gives us a much better opportunity to do that. Some of our rooms, 28 kids in it. Mr. Carlson, can we spread out your desks if we are now into eight people in the room, 10 people? I mean, yeah, that's what we would need to successfully get that down to.
That would also help with our quarantine numbers, because the.
Oh, absolutely. And that's the reason why you would spread it out, because we don't want to be sending kids home.
Right.
That's the only reason why you would do it.
In a, in a hybrid model, I feel like we've put a lot of emphasis on the 4K through 5. A lot of outreach was done on the 4K through 5. We understand that they have a whole set of needs, but I believe that our 6 through 12 have needs that are just as important. I think there was a community member who spoke and said, "At least the 4K through 8th graders," because she knows those kids matter. But I think we know that all of our kids matter. And Mr. Carlson spoke with a project that he had, the trades are already in trouble, and giving these kids a future after high school, and then denying them to be here to get that possible outcome concerns me greatly. Is there, do you have, what does those classrooms look like? Are our teachers going to be ready to, I know it was really difficult. We're always going to have those kids in remote, and right before, we went to totally remote, we were kind of running a hybrid situation because of the quarantine numbers. So they're running two classrooms, kids that are at home, kids that are there. Our teachers have rose to the challenge. I think they can be ready. What do you think? What do you hear from your staff?
We've had discussions. I've prepared them for these possible scenarios. We have stressed that even though we were at 230, 240 kids in the building back on November 12th, we weren't in a true hybrid model. I refer to that as the quarantine model. And there's a big difference between 220 kids that are forced out for 14 days and having the other kids in person. I've talked with some staff. Some staff would keep on a synchronized schedule where they're out-of-school kids and their in-school kids would be relatively at the same spot. Other teachers would be going asynchronous, the lab-based classes, the shop classes, where they would be doing their labs, their hands-on stuff when the kids are here, and the kids that were at home would be doing things more on their own in that situation. Each teacher has been thinking about and trying to figure out the best way for that to happen, and, and we started talking about this in July. So they'll change, they'll modify, they'll do whatever they need to do.
Thanks, Mr. Gould.
Don't leave yet. So, in your, in your hybrid model, what would you consider a best date to start?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
If we went to the, to a new matrix and started in hybrid, and, or whatever we do here, what's a best date, would you say, the staff could be prepared to reconvene in that situation?
I would say the absolute earliest would be Monday, the 14th, would be the earliest. We, I mean, we, whatever we do, we want to do it well.
Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering, you know, that, I'm asking that because it's like, okay, if we decide to do this, what, what kind of a lead time, what type of prep time, what is the best thing for the staff and everything in the building and everything like that?
Could I speak? Does that make two leaders?
It's up to you, Chelsea.
That's not.
No.
Yeah. I mean, we've got a week and a half to go, once we get to December 14th until Christmas break. The high school, for the most part, is, is functioning quite well right now. We have a very high attendance rate. We are working with a number of special needs students, at-risk students in different capacities. We're doing everything we need to, to be successful right now, but we certainly look forward to the opportunity someday to get kids back.
Thank you.
I certainly agree with Mr. Gould. Our goal is to get children back to school, but we also have to consider what the teachers are going to go through. My staff at the intermediate school did an amazing job, the first 12 weeks of getting kids back to school, teaching, and getting them ready to go to either a hybrid or a remote model. We skipped the hybrid, went right to remote. They've been doing an amazing job with the kids in remote. Our concern about bringing students back before Christmas would be how many families keep their kids at home. So you really have three types of students that you're teaching. You've got kids in front of you, you have kids in remote at home, and then you have the kids that are weaving in and out through quarantine, because we will still have that. And I feel, we feel at the intermediate school, that that is just too big of a job to do well. We want to teach, we just don't want to babysit. We want to be teaching our students well. Give us time to prepare for that. Give families time to make the decision to come back to school, so after school, or after Christmas, we can be ready.
What, what would that, what changes do you need to make, Mashak, to make that happen?
Well, we need to know how many are coming back and how many are not. That's just a huge number that we have no idea. And for a teacher to know, are five coming back, are 15 coming back, or are all 20, to not know that, how do you plan? So we just, we need time to know how many are coming back so that we can make plans.
All right. So if I understand your question, what you first want to know, like, what we would do to be prepared to return?
What would that, what changes do you have to implement?
Certainly.
To go from a total remote where you're at now to possibly, I don't see us coming back face-to-face, and that would be a real easy one, but to go to a possibly a hybrid situation?
Certainly.
Again, with like two classrooms, basically, or maybe even three, you know, sets of concerns. What changes do you have to make to get that ready to go?
Okay. Well, the biggest concern I would have about coming back is the same thing Orr would have, is we're hearing from parents saying, you know, we want our kids back, but we're also hearing from parents, there's no way I'm going to send my kid back. And so even if we decide that we would go fully face-to-face, you have to understand that there will be a lot of parents that won't. And so the problem then is, which, who are they? And then are the teachers prepared to know who is and who isn't? And then preparing, do we need to do movement? And what do we need to do to make sure that we're servicing everyone appropriately? So I'd be concerned about that. I'm also concerned if we were to come back completely face-to-face. Truly understand that when we had maybe seven or eight cases in the, in the district, how many of that affected? Where Josh had 100 kids, I had 60 kids out plus staff. And at that point, there was one day I had a case that got, and through the contact tracing and people that were told they had to go home, I had seven staff out that left that day and no subs available. There are districts that are true that are, that are out, but I think people also have to understand there are districts where they're, like Orr said, they're putting four or five to six classrooms of kids in the gym with one person watching them, and they're not learning, and they're not going to class. They're just being babysat in the gym. And right now, I have kids that are taking lessons, being taught every day by teachers remotely, and we are getting excellent attendance. I think that's, we have to understand that. And most of the time, I have two, maybe two kids out, out of hundreds, that aren't participating in my level. Turning in the work all the time is a little bit more difficult than coming onto the live stream lesson, but that's the same problem we have every day in school with kids, especially middle schoolers. If we were to go back, I agree with Josh that, or Mr. Gould, that coming back into a hybrid model would be a much easier way for us to avoid the problems we had when there was active cases, and it was really hard to keep all the kids completely apart. Whether it would be lunchtime, or in classes, we would be able to separate the kids out much further away from each other by having less kids in the class at a time. And that would still offer face-to-face instruction for half the time. So I think that would be something that we could do. We were lucky, both Josh and I were, to have the ability to, you know, put in the live streaming cameras and microphones. And so for the most part, our kids are sitting through their, all their classes every day and getting what they would if they were here. And so we've been able to move forward with that. I think we would just continue to do that. I think the staff is going to need some time to make sure that when they get to hybrid, what it's going to be like having half the kids out. And doing the remote lessons, we would have the time to kind of prepare for that. I have a feeling that, I'm a little worried that, you know, right now it's end of Wednesday, that two days and then we're back is going to be a little difficult to do. To me, for the, at least for the older students, that maybe 6 through 12, the January 4th date as much, when we get back after break would be more realistic, because it would give us the time to say, hey, we're going, we may be moving to this. Are you going to be coming back or not? Which students are? Let's take out our hybrids and figure that out and move forward. So.
How long do you think it'll take to contact parents and get their decisions on whether they're coming back or staying remote?
I can speak to that time. The timelines I had in mind, if you were to bring back any population of students, in my mind, there are three logical dates to do that. Monday, the 14th, which is next week, Monday, the 16th, which is next week, Wednesday, or January 4th, which is the first day we come back after Christmas break. If it was the 14th, you're asking parents to declare that intent between tomorrow morning and the end of the day Friday. I think that's a pretty quick turnaround, because once they've declared that intent, you must deliver that information to staff, and they have Saturday and Sunday to make it happen for Monday morning. That's pretty quick. If it's Wednesday, I think your window expands from Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then into Monday, then they can make their declaration at that point, and staff would have a day or two, that's still pretty fast, but they have a little more time. If it's the 4th, I think you expand that through Wednesday, and then they have from this evening, or tomorrow morning theoretically, to next Wednesday to declare that intent, and then staff has an opportunity to plan for what that dual model would be for the 4th. So those are the three logical options. There's also dates after January 4th, but those are the first three in my mind.
If we, if we chose to come back, let's say, on January 4th or after Christmas break, and then you're asking parents to make that decision by, declare that intent, whether their children are coming back or not, by. are coming back or not, by Wednesday, the 14th, that gives then six school days for our teachers to prepare?
The 16th would be Wednesday, and that would be six days before Christmas break. That is accurate, yes.
And you think that's enough time to do that? Because I, you know, we asked for parents to declare that intent before, and we had some, you're always going to get people that miss the deadline.
Sure. I believe it's more time than the two days or the four days that you have, if you come back on the 14th or 16th. And I'm not saying it's enough, I couldn't begin to say that, because I'm not doing it. That's a daunting task, to have a three-fold model of kids in front of you, kids in quarantine, and kids that have chosen not to come back. And that's also daunting for parents to make that decision as quickly as they have to, if it's the 14th or the 16th.
Okay.
And you know, you look at, and I know you've heard from parents on both sides of these issues, and, you know, just like I have. And I know there would be quite a few that wouldn't come, and quite a few that want them back right now. I do firmly believe that if you said we're going to return on Monday, you're going to have a lot more that are going to say, oh, I'm not sending them back till after break. But if you came back on January 4th, at least at the middle school and high school, you'd have a lot more that would maybe feel more comfortable after they've seen where the numbers are going to go and then other, with the holidays.
Well, I think if we're keeping in mind that our teachers, and just to have that stability and that time for them to prepare too, and all of those considerations, I just, in my mind, I don't see that turning around before Christmas break and having parents have that intent in is really an option.
You'll also have to consider, if you're having a quick turnaround time in preparation for kids that are, again, in three spots, they're remote and quarantine, you're going to have a far less quality product in all cases, if they're not able to do this.
Yeah.
Because they're going to either need a reduced school week, or more prep time in the day with subs that we do not have.
Right.
So to do that on the 4th, you'll have far fewer folks declare that intent than if you do it on Monday or the 16th. That's my opinion.
So I just have to bring up a couple other points, though. I mean, we've had kids in quarantine, and it's like, you're going home now.
Yep.
And the teachers have had no time to plan or prepare. Sometimes they don't even get to get any materials, and they're just, you know, you, out. And, you know, so, I mean, the teachers have been having to figure it out all this time, and then I-
Which wasn't the best education, but it was because of the safety issue.
No, it wasn't at all. In fact, I have a little bit of a hard time of, my kid was there until 2 o'clock, and now, hey, you got to get him out of here. He's already been there for most of the day, now why does it matter that he has to leave now, instead of finishing the day, getting some materials together? I guess I have a hard time with, you know, he's already been there for the whole, you know, most of the day, or even if they were there for half the day, they've already had exposure to people. So that's another issue, but.
Creating a two-fold or a three-fold model, I think, is different than how we want to proceed on quarantines.
Yeah.
And then that's a whole, those are whole different topics.
But I'm saying, like, kids have been doing it, and sometimes 50 kids in a day. I mean, so-
True. Yes, they have.
They're, you know-
It hasn't been high-quality education, and I know-
I'm not saying it's been the best either, but.
And I know full well, it's been incredibly big stress on parents and on teachers.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just want to comment on why we send kids home as soon as we know. One thing is if they ride a bus, we don't want to expose other children. I mean, I hate to even bring up this word, but if kids had head lice, they didn't ride the bus home, you know? And this is a far cry from head lice. So as soon as we know, I feel it's prudent that we call. For instance, one Friday night, we found out at 8 o'clock that a student was positive, and we, that evening, called every parent to make sure that student was not in the community on Saturday or Sunday. We did not wait till Monday. And that has happened many, many times, that we are working through the weekend to make sure kids are quarantined immediately, in the interest of our community. So that's why we send them home immediately. So, any other questions on that, or concerns?
No, I'm not saying it's been the best, but I'm saying, my other question is, you know, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm trying to understand both sides, I'm trying to think it through, but, you know, it seems like we're coming up with another option for families and saying, like, now you have this other option to do something different. You know, we kind of ask them at the beginning of the school year, are you coming to school?
Under guidance of the Department of Public Instruction, we would have absolutely no leg to stand on if we said, you are absolutely forced to come back Monday, Wednesday, or the Monday after break, you have to-
Right, of course, we can't force people to come back.
We could not, we could not not give them the option to be remote. We would have a very difficult time doing that.
But-
They have to have that option.
Don't you feel like, I mean, have people decided all through the year, like, I want to be remote now?
I don't know people's thought processes, I simply know that there will be folks that would not come back. I can't say how many. I can only say that there would be people that wouldn't feel comfortable in doing that. I've heard from them, and so have you. So there would be some.
It's like when we made the decision of where the hybrid, where the hybrid numbers would come if we split, so we were very careful to make sure that, we communicated with families which group they would be in, and we looked at busing, we looked at families, and basically built those sizes off the elementary and intermediate schools. But if you were to say to an intermediate teacher, you're going to be teaching a certain number of kids every day in person, and some of them are going to be remote at the same time, they're going to certainly need to know who those people are and communicate and plan. And that's not going to be able to be done overnight.
Yeah.
Because they need to know who they are. And they wouldn't right now until parents maybe declare what they're going to do. I'm not sure how long that will take, but it's going to be something to work through.
Well, if you were in a hybrid model, they could be remote in that model. They just wouldn't be coming those two days, they would just still be virtual.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, in the hybrid, there is an option for that, for them, not to have to send their child to school.
Right. And I think, there will be parents that aren't going to send them back, no matter what we do. And so we're just going to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're right, there were times where we had 60 kids out, and, you know, we were teaching, and then you had, in my building, you may have 15 to 20 kids in your room, and four, five, six others that are at home on the computer, and you're trying to maintain what's going on here and what's going on there. And, you know, it's a chore, and it's a task, but they've been doing it. We would just want to make sure we know exactly who is when and where, and that we're communicating with parents what expectations will be.
Yeah. It, you know, it just seems to me like we didn't, if it wasn't an option at the beginning of the year, parents had to choose if they were going to do, you know, virtual, like a different program, or if they were going to log into their classes, or if they were in middle school or high school, I believe they had that option, or if they were going to be in person. And, you know, we didn't give them the option of like, well, I want to have my real elementary teacher, my aimy elementary teacher, but I want to stay at home. And I understand that we're, you know, again, we have to work with what's happening, what's going on, but it seems like that's a whole nother new-
The district can certainly just offer the one in-person option, and take it or leave it, if the district wants to do that, we can do that.
I mean, you always have kids that are out and missing and quarantined, and, you know, missing school.
Sure, we will always have kids in quarantine if they're told to go in quarantine. We don't have to offer another option. If we want to roll the dice and do that with our families, I think that would be imprudent to do that, and I'm not so sure where we would stand with the Department of Public Instruction and with our families, but if that's what you want to do, we can do that.
But it's kind of like where, yeah, we did offer remote options for families to do virtual education, based on the numbers that they saw at the beginning of the year. Now we've changed that model, because there were people that didn't like that and wanted to come back. Now we may change that model again, because there's people that don't like it and want to come back. But at the same time, then you have to say, okay, you made your decision where the first model was, now we're going to change the model, but we're not going to give you that same option. And I think, I agree with all these parents, we need to take a look at all that's there, and give them the options to make the model, so that we can get kids back and do it safely. But then we also have to respect those other parents then, too.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Mr. Benson. I think that we're, as a board, we're asking for that grace and that flexibility from our parents and our staff to make these informed decisions as this changes. Our credibility has been called into question many times, because you rolled this plan out, and now you changed it once, and now you want to change it again. But if we're going to follow that science of things changing and things evolving, then we need to give that same, in my opinion, we need to give that same grace to our parents. And we are getting close to that end of the semester, that comes up in the end of January, I believe, right? And they would declare an intent again.
January 26th is the first day of the second semester.
And we have to take in consideration, we have families with sick parents, we have some of them, a lot of my kids are with their grandparents every day, and those grandparents may now, because of COVID's so high, may not want to send their kids back. You know, we understand that a lot of these little kids aren't getting sick, but they're still going home to people and interacting with people who could get sick. And there are many members in our school district that have lost loved ones over the last month to COVID. And so I think, you know, we have to then sit back and say, okay, as parents, if we're going to come back, then we have to be able to give them the flexibility as well.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. You know, if we're changing model, it makes sense that we give parents that option also. I just think this is kind of like a new idea, to me, that, you know, we have to communicate this option to parents and hear back from them and make all these adjustments. And so I guess I'm just processing all of that, because I wasn't really taking that into consideration.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is saying, like, you can just stay home today, or in tomorrow, and then, but then you decide to come back, and then you bounce back out again. I don't think anybody is talking about that, you know, kind of thing. And I think we kind of saw that that was happening at the high school a little bit, because the classes were being streamed, and so some kids were like, getting up, and then like, hey, I'm not coming to school today, and then logging in, but then, so, I don't think anybody's talking about that kind of model. I think anybody's just talking about giving that option to remain remote if they choose to do that, not being back and forth. So that would give time for teachers to plan and all those things. So I think, I think that's kind of the difference.
And it could be, we need to know what your intentions are going to be, if we're going to be coming back, whatever the numbers are at, and say, hey, you know, we have, the semester ends at the end of January, so between now and January, what's your plan going to be? And then we can always revisit that, was classes changed and adjust? It's not going to be something to, I don't think, I don't think it would be fair to ask a parent to make a decision for a real lengthy time. But we certainly, what we don't want, like you said, is, I'm going to keep my son and daughter at home because I'm concerned, but then I want them to come on Tuesday, and then the next day I want them to come on Friday, and it's really confusing. That would be a problem.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Yep.
Good point, though. Good point.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
So understandably, this looks different in every building. So I'm representing the elementary school. I think your initial question, Shar, was what would look different if kids come back to school? And the two main things that we talked about as a staff and administration is that our 4K students would begin wearing masks all day. That is one thing that we did not have, and that was a point of contention for, especially our 4K teachers, understandably. The second thing that we did, which may or may not be real popular, but was very much understood, and I thank Mr. Gould for this, was to eliminate or limit the high school traffic in the elementary school. So we do not have high school helpers, we do not have kinship. The purpose of that, of course, was because that, you know, from the data that we saw, that's where the spread was taking place. If we could limit high school in clubhouse, that would be beautiful, but unfortunately, Nina just cannot do that. But she has made some changes as well, and she has tried to keep the high school children in cohorts, like we do at the elementary school with our classes. So we know that we're dealing with this amount of children in this class. So those are the three big things that the elementary has done, in addition to everything that we did, even to start up school and to be in school for as long as we did. So kudos to the staff and everybody involved with that. We've done a good job. I agree with many of the comments and questions about coming back to school, and when we come back to school, and what does that look like. It is very taxing on the staff to think about three different models: in-person, those students quarantined, and remote learning. And again, I'm representing the elementary school, and the elementary school teaches six subjects at least in one day. It's very difficult. I have met personally with every team twice since we met last time, in small groups, to say, okay, you guys, what are you thinking? How can we make this work? We have some good recommendations, but they, and more conversation has to happen with the administration, the administrative team, to see what we can actually do. But I think one of the things that I would say my entire staff would agree to was coming back on January 4th would give time for teachers to plan and to be prepared. It would also give parents the opportunity to make a commitment to coming back or not. And it were, you know, if they came back next week, I think as an entire administrative team, we believe that a lot of families will not come back because of the Christmas holiday, but if we come back January 4th, we'll have a better sense of, you know, who is committing to coming back. I think the teachers are a little anxious or concerned about having to teach all three, again, in-person, quarantine kids, and remote learning, even after January 4th. And so conversation has been, you know, perhaps, and I think, and we even had this as an administrative team, to say to families, if you come, if you decide not to come back January 4th, you have until semester time to change your mind, and then after that time, you would be possibly committing to, you know, staying out. That's a big, that's a big if, because as Aaron said, we did that at the beginning of the year, we said, Calvert families, you're out, and then we saw that that didn't work. My staff personally feels like if we went from January 4th through January 22nd, the end of the semester, giving families that remote option, and then those families that still want to remain in remote after, which the beginning of the second semester is January 26th, so they're not in for three weeks, my staff would love it if we could offer Calvert to those families that are not comfortable to come back, because that would eliminate one option for teaching kids. Does that make sense to you?
And we asked, we asked families to commit through the semester, right? And then there was the option of people returning at the semester time, right? So I suppose-
I think they're referring to the folks that went virtual from the get-go.
Right.
And they are signed up through the semester, and they have the option to continue into the second semester or come back, yes.
So we could offer that option again, if people choose to stay, I'm going to stay out the rest of the year.
We can, but it makes a lot more sense to do that at a semester.
Right.
Which isn't until the 26th of January.
That makes sense, exactly.
That was kind of the point. We would take that in semesters.
The other question, Shar, that you had is, how comfortable is the staff in coming back? You know as well as I do, I have some teachers that are very anxious about it, and then I have some teachers that really want to be back in person. It's a hard call. And I, I think as a staff, we understand how difficult this is for all of you, and we will move forward and respect whatever you decide as a board. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, my colleagues have spoken quite well on this, so I'll try to be as concise as I can. Three kind of concerns in terms of a return to in-person learning would be around the staffing and the planning, particularly with the three models where instructors will be supporting remote learners. And these are not just, these are students often with more complex needs, learning disabilities. They'd be supporting onsite, face-to-face learners, and they'd also be supporting individualized programs for those students that have the most severe and complex needs. You've heard from some of those parents here tonight. And that's an obligation that we need to meet, not just because it's a state or a federal obligation, because it's the right thing to do for these students. Having said that, it takes time to plan, particularly when you have staff that have been furloughed, they've been reassigned, in some cases, to other duties. They've been reassigned in some cases to other duties. And the communication to put together those instructional lessons and then plan for the individualized learning for those students with the greatest needs takes a little bit of time. So you've definitely heard from my colleagues, again, just echo whatever time can be afforded. I think that gives us a better plan. And to emphasize that that time will give us, you know, an adequate method to communicate, to provide some clarity to our plan and some coherence.
Do you know of any, it seems like the parents that we have heard from that have special needs children are advocating very strongly to be back into a face-to-face model, knowing that their children definitely learn better that way. We haven't heard from every parent that has children with special needs. Speaking from, as a parent who had a child with special needs in the services department, he's graduated a long time ago now. But a lot of the staff are still here that taught him. And I can't imagine that he would have gotten where he is today without their support and him being here face-to-face in that model. Things would have looked very different for him in that future. And I take that into consideration highly, talking about this. Do you know of any parents that are thinking that their children would rather benefit from being home? Or do we think that we're going to get a greater volume of special needs children coming back than maybe the average general population?
It's hard to say. As you know, it's a spectrum of need and disability area. We have some students on IEPs, 504 plans, that frankly, with the right support, can do quite well in a remote learning model than they can. We also have other students that have more severe, complex needs, related services, sorts of programs that really require that in-person instruction. And so to answer your question in terms of, you know, how many, you know, we've certainly already looked at those students that have a greater need. We're talking about more pull-out, self-contained, special ed classes. And we've begun the discussion of, you know, how do we get these students individualized decisions and get them into the building to get them services regardless of the decision made here tonight?
I'm just wondering like what that would look like as a staffing impact to bring those kids back.
You can, if they have a plan, an IEP and a 504 are those plans. You can simply write it into the document and they can receive services no matter what the matrix says. Because that's a legally binding document that is supported by the law. So we can do that for any kid with a plan.
And do we not have any students that have special needs that are getting services at school right now?
Brad would be best to speak to that.
Yeah, we have, we have a small amount of students that are either have been receiving services through an IEP or a 504 plan. And also continued discussions, it's just a matter of plans and having that clarity in terms of what our model is. That's kind of what we're, we're working on. But yes, we have had students in that have 504s or IEPs.
Yeah, because I would definitely like to see those kids, and maybe we need to include that in our matrix, but, you know, that those kids come all four days in a week.
I don't know that we need to, because it isn't about being preferential, but it's about following the law. And we would follow the law. And we already have kids that are being educated in that way.
Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I think that we need to get to making decisions. I have my own long statement. I prepared as far as just kind of expressing my thoughts and my answers to a lot of the questions that we've received in emails and things. And I don't want to take a lot of time, but I do want to say that, you know, we're not, we're not facing our opinion or our votes tonight on who's talking the loudest or who's, you know, expressed their opinion and been loud or talked, you know, given us more input. We, we understand that, you know, it may look to people like we're not being consistent because we are changing the matrix. Or at least that we may do that tonight, or we're voting to. But we didn't, we hadn't had COVID in school when we came up with a matrix in the summer. And we modified it in October because we had very low numbers of COVID cases in our district, but the county numbers were high. And again, we are trying to look at the science and the data that it's not spreading at schools and that school is the best place for kids to be. And that, and that several places, the CDC, Dr. Fauci, the Academy of Pediatrics are recommending that kids be in school. And so I think we're trying to take all of those kinds of things into consideration. We appreciate hearing from people in our community, from parents, from staff. And we're, you know, doing the best we can to, to look at, look at all the numbers, to be concerned about the spread of COVID, about the effects that it could have. But, but we're, you know, I guess just taking all those things into consideration. You know, ultimately, we all, I think, agree, we all agree that being in-person for education is important and that education really is essential. And there's a lot of things, as Mr. Carlson said tonight, there's a lot of things that can't be taught virtually for six through 12. I have three in six through 12. And there's a lot of things that they're missing out on and that they can't do virtually. So we opened sports, we voted to do that last Monday, because you can't do that virtually. But there's a lot of other parts of education that you can't do virtually either. And I would really like to see them, us change them, you know, I want to see the matrix changed so that those kids can be in a hybrid model and get some of that experience. You know, I think of the house building, the house building class, I'm like, you know, I want to see that class get back. And I would like to see them be able to work on it every day, outside and inside. I'm sure they have to do some inside work, but on that class and on that house that's been sitting there now for several weeks, lots of other things. So anyway, it's, it's a tough decision and there's a lot of things to take into consideration.
To make that happen, I think you're looking at option two, which has the yellow and red changed and then the clause and the dates changed and increasing the county and the district number. Option one, if you don't increase the number, you still end up in red and then the clause of 4K through five being here. So you're looking at, at option two, if that's what you choose to do.
In that option, well, both options have that, have the caveat at the bottom of a school closure may be accelerated due to a significant unanticipated outbreak. And plan may need to be adjusted due to an impact on total attendance. Do we have, what does that look like? That's a, it's a sketchy slope. I think, I mean, that's always been a contingent on our matrix. But do we have like a concrete number that that would look like to say this is an outbreak or who declares that or how is that done?
I think the number would be determined by the administrative team based on the number of subs that you needed. And eventually it would become unsustainable and that building just wouldn't be in operation. There are districts in our CISA that have actually said, we have more kids that are out on quarantine than we have here. So we're, at this point in time, we're going remote. And it was because the number of kids gone. There are also districts that have said, we are out of action. We don't have enough subs for our elementary. We're closing our elementary. That's happened within the last month. So I think it would be largely contingent on having staff in order to be able to teach. If we brought everybody back and used these numbers, my fear would be we would have a subsituation at the middle and high school by the end of the first week. That's what I, that's what I would fear.
And a subsituation meaning we don't have enough?
We don't have enough, we don't have enough teachers in order to be able to teach. We would have that many positives and that many quarantines. Because remember, when we had 17 cases in two days in the district, we had some 250 to 350 students in quarantine. And that's, that's in two days.
So if that happened, would...
So what, go ahead.
I was going to say, and if that happened, there would be like, it would be almost like a snowstorm where you have to cancel school, where you would just send an automatic call.
What most districts are doing is it's, you're getting the call Saturday or Sunday before the Monday. We don't have enough teachers, schools remote.
And then another question I had about option two is the determination date and the implementation date. I mean, if we were to go by that, it looks like we would all be back in school on December 14th, according to the numbers. But it sounds like none of the school and the staff is ready to start on Monday. So I think that even if we went with option two, the implementation date would not be Monday, December 14th unless we voted to.
You can do whatever implementation date you wanted.
I guess I would say right now I'm, I would vote against implementing this on December 14th. Because that just does not seem like enough time. It seems like, other than Mr. Gould, everybody kind of wanted to start after Christmas. And that does make sense. And it makes sense to start all four schools after the holidays.
I think these dates are just the ones that are concrete now from the old matrix. It doesn't mean that if we act on this, that we, that these would be the implementation dates.
Exactly. I just wanted to...
We would make that, yeah, determination tonight.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to make sense to rush back, to literally get three, four days in before Christmas break when those might not be the most productive classroom days anyway. Yeah, I don't, I think I like the option two proposal. I think it gives us a chance to get back and hopefully stay back. Option one, I would be somewhat leery that we could end up in the same position we're in now, with the exception of the 4K through five, but...
I really think our older kids deserve to be able to come back. And I think that we should be able to give hybrid a try and that they could get some of the in-person education that they need. There's just a lot of classes that can't be done virtually. And, and so I think that...
Yeah, I would agree.
If we wait for the numbers, we could be waiting three months.
I think so too. And it's not, and it's really not even, you know, there's classes that we can't do at home. But then there's also, it's not even about, like, I think it was talked about, it's, Mrs. McCall said it's not about where it happens, but it's about the product being put out. And our products that's being put out, our teachers have risen to that level of creativeness and have done a great job doing that. But my fear for these kids are, these older kids are always the ones that are left home alone in most cases. The argument has been that they're responsible for their education. I think any of us who have had teenagers and kids that went through, even the most responsible of kids who's went through those grades, aren't always responsible for their own education. And yes, we see that when they're here too. But at least that face-to-face, even a couple of days, is accountability for these kids. We've put place, we've put practices into place in the middle school when they're here as of check-in times with their teachers, our warrior times with our high school kids. And that is lacking at home. Our parents are just taxed right now with trying to keep their kids safe, fed, and not always checking up to see if those assignments are being done, even though power school is there. I'll admit, I mean, it's the same for me. I have a kid in high school and I don't always check up on her. And I fear that if we wait until, to bring these kids back to these numbers go down, it's going to be too late for some of those kids. And even though they're logging on, are they doing the work? I feel that some of these kids being here is their only chance to have a place where they feel heard and seen and that they feel that they matter. And if they're not getting that at home, they're less likely to log in for classes, they're less likely to do their work. So even though that the product is there, if they're not accessing it or they're not wanting to even get out of bed and turn their computers on, I feel that we're going to lose those kids. And I don't want to see that happen. I think Amory does a really great job and prides herself in reaching those kids. And we need to give them a shot.
I want to summarize so I make sure I have it right, because I'm going to be charged with making it happen. So I'm hearing you say option two, using the numbers from yesterday's correspondence, which was 21 in the district, 537 in the county, which on option two puts you at third row, fourth column, 4K, five, face-to-face, six, 12. Cohort, meaning Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Am I correct?
That would be my...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it. Now, my second, my follow-up question is, is it that we are following the matrix to derive where we are at in color? Or are we just unilaterally making that decision and doing away with the matrix? Because the next determination date could have us in red. And does that mean we're going to continue with hybrid at the six, 12 level and keep 4K through five in person? Or does that mean something different? Because I don't know where this is going anymore so than anyone else does. I think at the very least, we need to change the January 6th number, because that would be the third day after you've returned, to at least January 13th. So you at least have a window of opportunity for them to be there, if not a different date. So again, I need to know, are we following the matrix to derive that or are we following just a unilateral decision? Because if it's a unilateral decision, the matrix is no more.
I don't think that we've hit over, well, we've definitely hit over 700 cases in the...
We had the 840 number in the 26. That would have put us in red for six, 12.
The student number is 31 to 40, right? But if we, like last time, like the last...
The window before was 26 and 848.
It was 26 and over 700, so we would have been in red, which again, I am, I am, I would like to see, and again, I, I understand that I think it is good to have a matrix plan. I think that has served us well by having us not scramble when we had cases come up all fall. Whereas I think other districts were scrambling because they didn't have a plan or they kind of were like, well, now what do we do? We've got three. Now what do we do? Now we've got seven. So I think it's been good to do that. So I do like the idea of a matrix. I guess, you know, I just, I think having like a virtual for the older kids, for all the kids, I'd like to see that be more of a everyone, two weeks, like quarantine, like break, you know. Obviously, we have 21 cases in the district and it's not come from each other because they haven't been here. I mean, it's not come from school spread.
Well, we don't know how many cases there in the district. That's just what we know. Our suspicion is based on the number of emails we're getting, which is very few, there are far more than 21. We just don't know. But we know there's 21. We've got proof of that.
Well, and I, and I think that's true of all of these numbers. We just don't know. We don't know how many cases are in the county.
We don't know.
No matter where we go.
Are the numbers where you want them to be? Because I would hate to see us have to revisit the numbers again. Are the numbers where we want them for the district and for the county?
It would almost seem like we'd have to change the red. You know, the 4K through five could be face-to-face, or almost reduce the number of red squares.
What some districts have done is they've just done the bottom row is red. And the rows that are not bottom, that are in red presently, become yellow. That's what some districts have done.
Yeah.
That seems more logical. Because if we had more than 40 cases with students and staff, that would likely mean we'd have a shortage of teachers.
I would say there's a likelihood of a shortage of teachers in the two rows above that as well. But I don't know that for sure.
So calling anybody who wants to sign up for substitutes?
Speaking of, that's a separate question. I did get asked, what it, you know, from a community member, a college graduate, wondering if they could be a sub.
I would call my friend Becky Schmidt in the district office and we would sign you up.
Yes.
Maybe Becky, do you know what the requirements are? You probably do.
To call Becky Schmidt.
Yes, actually, if you... If you have an associate's degree, you can apply for a short-term sub-license, which means that you could substitute in a position for up to 45 days in any one classroom. And actually, the DPI has extended that for this temporary period due to COVID. So you can go actually longer than that, but generally it's a, you can take up to a 45-day assignment with a short-term sub-license. And the associate's degree can be in any area. It doesn't have to be an educated, related field.
So people with an associate's degree and an interest could potentially sign up for a...
Absolutely.
Sign up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dale sounds very interested.
Is there, so there isn't a limit, like, do our subs get to like day nine and then they can't? So there isn't a limit, like, do our subs get to like day nine and then they can't? They have to take a break?
No, you change your rate of pay, because you become a long-term sub at that point. The trick with subs is some only want to sub in certain areas. Not everyone wants to sub at the high school, sorry, high school. Not everyone wants to sub in special ed, it's, that's a special trade. Not everyone wants to sub in the elementary. I wouldn't sub in the elementary, that wouldn't work for me. I mean, some of them will sub anywhere. So, and there are not a lot of them, because some of them are afraid to be here.
And do they, but they, to be considered a long-term sub then, do they, is it, does it matter where they sub? I mean, if they're just subbing in a different classroom.
If you're subbing for, for 10 consecutive days or more, you become a long-term sub at that point.
Okay, no matter where or what?
No matter where.
Okay.
In the district. We can't say what they're doing in other districts.
Yeah, but I mean, no matter like if you're in third grade or if you're in junior high or what, okay.
Doesn't matter.
Well, I am trying to put together what I want this motion to look like, if it's all one motion or if it is different motions, because obviously we have the issue of what learning model plan we're, we want to adopt and when we want that start date to be. And I personally would like to see the younger kids come back before Christmas break, but I'm willing to be flexible on that. So, I mean, I, I guess to start, I would like to make a motion that we approve option two of the learning model transition plan.
Well, I think if we're going to do that, I think then we have to, we have to decide first what that option two will look like, if it's going to be as presented here in red and yellow, or if we're going to change those red squares.
And change the red, some of the red squares to yellow.
Yes, those three.
So that would be the first motion to, to decide upon.
Becky's going to chart what you're saying, because I don't want to get it wrong. So the red becomes yellow in, in rows three and four? Is that what you're saying? Okay, red becomes yellow in the rows three and four. Got it.
Okay, so then I would move to amend the option two learning model transition plan so that the only red squares on the matrix would be more than 40 cases in the district and then the, the whole bottom row from that.
Just as a reminder, determination date, we have, look at that, whatever we do here.
Yeah, I think that would come at the end after we.
Well, so we're, so he would say we would also modify this plan to be that the next determination date would be not Wednesday, January 6th, but Wednesday, January 13th, is that?
Or whatever date, that's just the next Wednesday.
That's the next Wednesday, that would make sense to me.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we'd have to deal with that separately, because these determination dates are just leftover, so.
So the 13th and then every two weeks thereafter?
Yes.
Yes.
For the ease of.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the implementation date would be the following Monday.
The following Monday, okay. The verbiage at the bottom left remains as is. The verbiage at the bottom right, we haven't even talked about, but that's really never been talked about since we adopted it.
I, I would just like to reiterate that there should be some exceptions as far as the special education students to be able to come all four days if that is possible with staffing and.
Yeah, but I think it would be twofold. Do they have that plan that allows for that? And second, do we have the staff to, to satisfy that need? And that would be largely up to Brad and the building principals to figure that out.
Can you be with the admin team?
Certainly, certainly. We can add it if we needed to, wanted to, certainly. And really, the last thing that, for the clarity of what this becomes is, is the numbers themselves, to leave them as is or to alter them. I'm just throwing it out there to make sure that we have that conversation.
I think we'd leave the numbers as is.
I think so, yeah. Zero to 10, 11 to 20, 21 to 30, right?
Yep.
Yep, what's listed there, if that's what you wanted to leave it as is. And then I guess the last question is, date of implementation based on tonight, when is it happening?
I think, can we make that a separate motion?
Yep, sure.
Was not included, yeah.
Just asking the question.
Yep.
So first, sorry, first, you're making, you're making the motion to change these things to this plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I will second the motion to change the things as we just discussed them.
All right, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the changes are approved.
So then I will make a motion that we approve the, or adopt the option two learning model transition plan for our matrix.
And starting and implementing that then on what day? Yeah.
You just approved that, right?
I do agree that the older students can wait. I, I personally would like to see the younger students come back before Christmas break, but then you're kind of breaking away from the model as of right now, so. Yeah.
I would like to see them come back after Christmas break. So either, I would be okay with either January 4th or January 11th, because I think that affords all of the staff time to make those things happen. And that was a big reason why I asked all of our admins to tell us what that looks like. I just think that would be a big ask for us to come back before Christmas. I, in my conversations that I had with staff, you know, I had kind of spitballed it in my own mind, dealing with one staff member of the 16th and listening to things that had to happen, all those changes. And that's really what I want people to understand is, it's a lot. Like, I wouldn't have known all of those changes had to happen before talking to the, to the staff members. And that was just my, my interaction with those staff members and I wasn't sure if anybody else had, had known that, but, so asking tonight those things, I think that gives us some clarity to know that would be a big ask and to have parents declare if they were going to be remote and get those numbers.
Not only the staff, but the parents need to make that decision.
We didn't, I mean, I didn't know that we were going to need to communicate with parents and let them give us an answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we try to get the kids back in school.
So I guess.
I wasn't considering that.
I would feel, I would, you know, go along with obviously your motion to approve. Option two, as the change is made, but then implement that, make it this effective on January 4th.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Approved.
So if we're looking at.
Are we basically putting this plan into effect?
Right.
On January 4th or?
I think that's what I heard you say, and then the next determination date being the 13th. I think that's what you said.
Yep.
But you're saying like, when, when would this determination date be? Like, when would we look at numbers? I think that's a good point. So we should be looking at numbers on, say, the 30th of December, right? Because that was the Wednesday before. Right, so we need to look at the numbers.
Well, you're talking January 13th, so it's an even bigger window.
No, but he's saying, like, if we put this plan into effect for January 4th, when do we look at the numbers to determine?
I heard you say the 13th is when you're looking at them next. That's what I heard.
Well, I don't know if it's necessary, because we aren't going, nobody's going to be in school.
But you still have, can have cases in your district and you still have your county numbers to look at.
We're not going to have cases in the district because nobody's going to be here.
You'll still have cases, you have cases now.
That's what we have right now.
You have 21 in the district.
It's Christmas break. It's Christmas, COVID goes away at Christmas.
We've had 21 in the last two weeks.
That would logically make sense to be the 30th, right? That's what we would have been looking at.
So if you're looking at it on the 30th, when is the, because if the, if the cases on the 30th have us in the red, are we in the red then on January 4th? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, if we're adopting this matrix, if we have over 40 cases in the district and we're adopting this matrix, I feel like then we have to stick with the matrix.
So the 30th is the first listed date after, well, it's in the ninth is passed, so the 30th is the first listed date. And then the 13th and the 27th, et cetera.
What if we had a determination date of a week from today, the 16th of December?
I mean, we can put in whatever you want, I'm just trying to figure out what it should, what it should say.
Right, right.
I mean, that cuts the window down from, you know, now till January 13th by at least a week.
Well, if you're only counting a week's worth of cases, you're certainly not going to be in the red. If you're counting two weeks' worth, you might be.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I was thinking Christmas, but that would be a day before.
So if we determined the number on December 23rd, that would take effect on the 4th?
I think it makes more sense to put the determination date as the 30th and then your implementation date as the 4th, because if it's the 23rd, you're not implementing on Monday during a Christmas break.
That was, yes.
So the 30th for the 4th, the 13th for the 17th or whatever it is?
On the 30th, you're looking at the two windows just before.
30th, you're looking at the two weeks just prior, so from the 17th through the 30th or whatever it is.
So it would include the 23rd anyway, even though.
It would, it would include that date. It's, it's, the way we have counted it technically has been Wednesday through Tuesday and then notified on Wednesday.
Right.
And kept going along that way.
All right. So if we did it on the 30th, we would just go back two weeks. So basically, what, the 16th through the 30th, we'd be looking at that two-week window?
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to change those implement and determination dates.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the determination date and the implementation, implementation date are approved. And I believe that is it for the learning model transition plan. And the next action item is personnel.
Three items, Jeff, new employment contracts for Jeffrey Green, elementary school custodian, Vincent Zaire for a high school assistant coach for wrestling, and a termination of club boss employee Sophie Porter.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel action.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the personnel action is approved. Now, I need to make a motion to go into, or need a motion to go into closed session considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 some C.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I guess we'll take a motion to go into.[1795.93]